Good morning. I call to order the special meeting of the Oak Island Planning Board. If we would, stand and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. And Matt, one topic, the first part of the agenda packet. Can you go over and explain the rules for wind farms, solar?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the reason I included this in this agenda packet was kind of, well, twofold. First, this is kind of where we've gotten to in our review of supplemental regulations, in the existing ones. But also, some of these topics came up when we talked about these uses in the table of use. So, anything that's in black in here is an existing regulation. For folks who are not used to looking at ordinance revisions, if it's in black, that's what's already adopted. Stuff that's red and underlined is new, and stuff that's read and struck through is to be removed. So, since we had had some questions about what the existing regulations were for those, I wanted to put them in front of you. I've reviewed these. The North Carolina General Statute and General Assembly have adopted rules for local regulations as it comes to alternative energy sources, so like solar farms, wind farms, as well as wireless telecommunications. A couple of years ago, there was some rule changes specifically meant to help wireless telecommunications organizations to build out 5G networks, including rules for like, what they deemed a small cell device, smaller facilities and co-locations. I wasn't here when these regulations were adopted, but in reviewing them, it looks like that these regulations were adopted in response to those statutory changes. So, as the statutes were adopted and new rules for what local jurisdictions can do were put into place. Usually, if it's a big one like this, the local jurisdiction will go ahead and try to amend their rules. It appears that that's what's happened here for the most part. And also, to show you the volume of supplemental regulations we have for these things, so in particular, the wireless telecommunications facility has several subsections and is several pages long. So, we would spend quite a bit of time reviewing these in their totality. And the last jurisdiction I worked with that did deal with these regulations, specifically wireless telecommunications, actually had to hire an attorney to assist them in drafting those regulations because the statutes are quite complicated in a lot of instances as far as what local jurisdictions can and can't do. So, since we had talked about it when the table of use items came up, I just wanted to make sure that you had those in front of you and understood kind of the nature of those, the volume of those, and kind of where they came from. As far as, I know we've been reviewing, you know, uses that didn't have supplemental regulations that we might want to adopt some for, or at least consider adopting some for. Those start on page 16 of your agenda packet, those are the red items that are underlined there.
Chairman Bradley, if I may, if I may, just as a reminder, and Matt, correct me if I'm wrong here, but wind farms are only in the industrial district as far as our table of uses anyway, right?
That's correct.
So, we don't really have an industrial district per se.
We do not currently have one on the zoning map.
So, we have all this information for really a district that we don't have operational. And then, on the wireless communications, I just had a question, Matt, because I see that on our table of uses, we have 60 feet tall or less, and then 60 feet and over. But in 7.54.2, it mentions 50 feet or less and 50 feet or more. So, I just wondered, should those two things be consistent?
So, 50 feet is actually what relates to those small cell regulations that the state passed in. It may be worth, as we, when you guys have the table of uses with all your feedback in it next month for adoption, it may be worth correcting the table, not the supplemental regulations.
Understood.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. And then, those over 60 feet tall, again, are only in the industrial district. That's per the table of uses, which sounds correct to me and appropriate.
Yes, ma'am.
I did have one final question. I'm sorry, Earl. In 7.54.3.3, again, this is very, to your point, Matt, very technical, all these things with wireless and wind farms, right? And governed much by law, by state law. But I just wondered, applications for special use permit, if there should be any technical review committee or someone who's an expert to review a special use permit on a wireless communication tower, station, whatever you want to call it? Because certainly, you know, people in the town are not going to be experts as to whether a special use permit is warranted or not.
Yeah.
Just would welcome your thoughts on that.
Yeah. So, anytime someone submits a special use permit application that includes a detailed spec plan, it automatically goes out to our technical review committee so that, because one of the standards for a special use permit is, does it comply with the underlying zoning regulations and ordinances?
Right.
Right? So, we do that anyway. One of the things that our technical review ordinances does is allows us to send it to anyone that we deem necessary to review it. Having, my first job, I worked in a jurisdiction that had a bunch of cell towers because it was a county, right? So, you know, you'd have places way out in the county that didn't have cell service. Verizon wants to come in and put in a tower. And what we did in that instance was, we reached out to, there are firms out there that review cell towers specifically. We reached out to them for their review as well.
Okay.
And like you said, it's only allowable in certain districts that we don't have, right? So, in the instance that that was going to happen or could happen, we'd have plenty of time to reach out and get some additional technical review done on that from folks. So, yeah, absolutely. But yes, to your point, we would definitely do a technical review on that and get some expert assistance on that as well.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
Well, the question that I was going to have, Mr. Chairman, which is a little bit broader, is if these are in industrial and we don't have industrial, why are they in the UDO? I understand that at some future time, if we want to allow it to go into a non-industrial or an area that's zoned other than industrial, we can add those at that time. I would imagine that these types of regulations do change and evolve a little bit based on environmental issues, technical issues, things like that. Is it better and easier for our UDO to exclude these items? And does it mean we can't take them up at a future time if somebody, if we believe that that is something that we want? But I'm not sure why we even have it in the UDO if it's not allowed in our town.
Well, so, because we do have an industrial district in the UDO as well. So, the point that Ms. McCullough was trying to make was that we don't have any areas that are currently zoned industrial in the town, but we do have that district in our UDO. So, how would someone apply that? If a property owner wanted to try to apply for a zoning map amendment to make use of those industrial districts, they'd apply to have planning board review and then town council review a zoning map amendment to have a piece of property be zoned into that industrial district.
But if that happened, then you would be able to look at some of these alternative items.
Well, so, yeah.
You couldn't put in a wind farm permit.
If that happens, we won't have time to go back and re-adopt regulatory standards for that because they could come in the next day and apply for a use that's permitted.
Okay. So, then let's have a different, do we want wind farms or do we want a solar farm in that industrial? Is that something that we want? Because that's the other question, if we want that, let's tackle it, you know, in a prioritized way, because I don't think it's a priority right now. But I mean, if we're not, if we don't want that, again, I just feel like we're, go ahead.
Okay. One clarification.
Sure.
Matt, tell me if I'm wrong on this. Right now, there's no industrial district that matches those requirements.
Correct.
And what Matt's saying is, if a property owner comes and wants to rezone that to that specific
Right.
table use, then it would be up to us and town council to approve the zoning. But if we decide not to approve it, then it's still not allowed.
So, my question would be then, if we decide that we want to have an industrial zone, but that doesn't mean by definition, we have to have wind farms or we have to have a solar farm, correct?
I mean, that's correct. You could exclude uses as you want. I think, to your point of this broad discussion of, is that something that's appropriate for an industrial zone? Should it be established in the town? That's something we'd look to the comprehensive land use plan for guidance on as far as what uses are.
I've read it doesn't mention either of these things as something that we want.
Which is why we've been pushing to get that updated specifically, you know, to address some of this issue.
Because we believe we do want it?
I don't know. That's the whole point, is we don't have any guidance on that right now. So, I don't have any guidance to give you because there's no adopted policy related to it. So, you look at me and say, does that something we want? If the comprehensive land use plan doesn't touch on it, I don't have any guidance for you guys to take one way or another.
This is a philosophical conversation. I just want to say, this is a philosophical conversation that I think is a little bit of a waste of time for us. I feel like there's so much to tackle, hotels, motels, we've talked about that. I feel like this is one that is so low on the priority list, and we're talking about what if, what if, what if. I'm not saying we don't tackle it. I'm just saying that, and I respect, now, Matt, I did not realize that this was more as just sort of an informational thing. So, I went through and read it thinking, this is what we are going to be talking about.
Sure.
So, that's why I'm a little bit amped up this morning, thinking, why in the world are we spending time talking about that? So, I apologize, Matt, I really do.
At this point, there's no way that could apply for it because there's no zone that allows it.
Agreed. Again, the overarching question, does our town want wind farms and solar farms? If we do not, as a town, then do we want anybody to put in a permit, whether we have an industrial zone or they're going to petition for the industrial zone or not? And I would say, we probably don't want this in our small town.
That would be turned down at that time.
Yeah.
It would be turned down at that time.
Yes.
So, let's.
I'm sorry. You guys work with me because some of us aren't used to dealing with the ordinance.
So, and we've got some new members here, so y'all likely haven't been through a rezoning case, right? So, and Chair, if I'm going on too long, and we're pushing on our agenda items, let me know. But so, somebody comes in and says they want to rezone a piece of property industrial district, right? This board and town council are required to look at all the possible permitted uses in that district. You cannot say, well, we think it's going to be this one good thing, so we want to approve it, no matter what the applicant says at all. The applicant can say, I'm going to build this nice, wonderful facility based on the industrial district. You've got to look at everything. So, in that case, if there's a use in there that you don't think is appropriate for that piece of property, like a wind farm, like a solar farm, like whatever, you get to review that and comment on whether you think that zoning is appropriate because of all of the permitted uses. If there's a permitted use in there that you don't think is right for that piece of property, that can be part of your recommendation as the planning board.
So, should we be talking about a nuclear power plant as an option that somebody might decide in an industrial park? I mean, there are a range of things that somebody could come back and talk about, none of which I would say we want in the town. So, should we be more inclusive than just wind farm, solar farm, those kinds of things as alternative energy sources? I mean, I'm just trying to decide, I mean, I'm trying to wrap my head around, part of it is the mission of this board and the work we have to do and how we get it done in a way that has an impact.
Yeah. And I mean, I'm just trying, man, as you mentioned, this is a high-level philosophical discussion that's, without adopted policy guidance, is best had at the comprehensive planning level. So...
But again, you were saying though, earlier, at the comprehensive planning level, because it's not in the comprehensive land plan use that I saw, wind farms and solar farms were not included in that, but yet we're still going to have those conversations. Again...
Once again, I'm not asking you to have that conversation. It was brought up earlier, so we're getting information.
It's more of not just for you, it's of this board and even presenting it. Anyway, okay, I'll stand down and my points have been heard. I'm just trying to understand, and that's all. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Bradley, I think if I could just make a comment. I think that the reason we have a lot of information within the UDO is sort of planning ahead, trying to look down the road as to what might happen, what might be needed, even though we may not have it or need it today. And to Matt's point, once someone's made an application, you can't go back and build rules around after the application's already in.
Because they have vested rights.
Right, exactly.
But this is a bigger question than just power plants or, I mean, if we don't want it, can we not just take it out and therefore not allow it? And therefore, we're not going to have, and we don't have this conversation happen. And again, I'm learning the process here, so bear with me and help me learn. But to me, if there, because that's what I thought you guys were doing up here in some of this stuff, is no, we don't want that on the island, send it off the island, or, you know, or we don't want it in our town. So, that's where I'm trying to wrap my head around, starting small, getting the things that matter right. Then we can always build out for those uses and zoning districts that might make sense down the road. But does it make sense now? Would we want a permit?
What Matt was trying to say is, at the time, the reason these are in is we already have the supplemental regulations
Right.
for that zone, for that particular use. If somebody comes in and applies, we cannot go back and build these regulations at that point.
Understand.
So, right now, there's no zone that's allowed to have these particular uses.
So, would we not then, as a planning board, make a motion to the town council that we remove it from the table of content in its entirety, the regulations around wind farms and solar farms, and just strike it from the UDO and then let that never be, or not right now at least, be an acceptable use that someone would apply a permit for?
Well, I'm all for wind farm or solar farm.
I am too, in the right environment. We're just a small town that doesn't have the space to include these things.
I could go down here and buy a Sea Watch that's empty
Yeah.
and come up and have it rezoned industrial and say, hey, I want to put a solar farm out.
And is that what we want to do? I'm just so, if that's deliberately what we want to do, then let's do that. If that's not what we want to do, can, are there other avenues for us?
The avenue is, we would turn down the application to rezone it.
Well, we would consider the application within the supplemental regulations
Yes.
and whether it complies or not. But without it, you wouldn't have any rules around it. You wouldn't have any rules to apply to an application.
So, we're saying we do want wind farms and solar farms?
We want them within the parameters that we've defined here. We would allow them within the parameters that are defined. Would that be the right way to say it, Matt, currently? If we, if someone had an industrial district, were allowed to have one, and a solar farm or a wind farm met these criteria, then yes, they would be theoretically approved.
Yeah. But the point to all that going back is, but you're right, Ms. McCullough. The point going back to all this is, since it's only permitted in one district that isn't applied on the island right now, the very first step to all of that is a zoning map amendment that comes to this board that gets recommendation and goes to town council, and they decide whether that zoning is even appropriate for that piece of property based on all the permitted uses in that piece of property. So, even if there's one use in that zoning district that you don't think is appropriate for that piece of property, whether it's a solar farm or a wind farm or something else entirely, you can make that part of your, a part of the reasoning for your recommendation one way or another, and council can consider that as a part of their decision one way or another.
But without these regulations that are written
Yeah, so if somebody...
we could not go back and rewrite the regulations after the permit's been requested.
Correct.
Yeah. So, let's say, in this hypothetical situation, someone comes in and applies for zoning into an industrial zoning district, and town council ultimately approves that rezoning, but the planning board has removed all of the supplemental regulations for this particular use. You could not, you wouldn't have time to come back and re-adopt them in order for someone to have those regulations applied to them, frankly, so...
So, it seems that you would have these uses allowed in that zone, that would be a consideration then when someone brings an application. You say, no, wait, we have these 12 uses versus we only have these two uses.
Yeah.
Then that would give the boards more, something more to look at, whether they all were appropriate uses for that property. And just, to me, it seems like it gives you a little more flexibility.
And for our new board members, you know, the planning board already completed a review and feedback on the table of uses itself. So, for these meetings, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chair, our objective going forward is to review potential supplemental regulations for things that don't already have supplemental regulations. And once again, I apologize, and anytime anybody has questions about the agenda of the agenda packet, come meet with me, let's chat, send me an email, I'm happy to answer questions about it. I apologize for not noting that in there because y'all weren't a part of that table of use discussion where it got brought up, well, what are our, what are our solar farm regulations? What are our wireless telecommunications regulations? Where I wanted to give you those so you'd at least have a chance to know what they are.
And Mr. Chair, I was here and attended that discussion as a citizen, going over the table of uses. I did not recall from that meeting, and again, my memory is not going to be what we should rely on, but I did not recall, did the planning board actually vote for all of those changes? Because I remember Terry sort of reading through them and saying, you know, and people were like, yeah, let's strike that, we don't want that, you know, and that kind of thing. But I never heard a vote from the planning board that the revised, the redlined table of uses that's in that November packet or December packet, whatever.
I believe that's correct.
Was approved by the planning board.
Right.
So, it's still a working
So, what you...
table of uses, as far as I'm concerned, if there's any other feedback.
This is going into process going forward. What we've, we've had those discussions, we're having these discussions now. In order to avoid having multiple votes on multiple items and multiple drafts of multiple things going forward
Sure.
the process we're using is to review all of these items, get all of your feedback, and incorporate that into an actual draft document for recommendation.
Sure. No, I agree. I just wanted to make sure I understood they're not final, they haven't been voted on, so if a new planning board member, and because I think Melanie and two others were not on here when that conversation was had as well, where they were approving the table of uses, if there are others who have any feedback or comments on the redlined version, that redlined version is still open for other feedback and input.
The whole document is.
The whole document.
And that would be when it's back in front of you for a recommendation.
Next one.
If I, Chairman Bradley, if I might make a suggestion, what might be helpful is, as we continue our work through this, Matt, if we could have in the packet, you know, the most current red line of the table of uses, so that you can refer back to that when you're going through the supplemental regs or the definitions, if that's possible to do.
That's a great idea.
Or give us a master table of uses we can hang on to that, you know, dated with the current red line status date or whatever, so we kind of know where we are.
I think that's a good idea, anyway, just because you're getting to the point where it will be time to review. And so, to refresh your memories, it's a lot of work. So, to do that, that probably is a good idea, to get as early as possible to them. And also, just one more comment mainly for the new members, the UDO is always a working document. So, even when the board puts this recommendation forward, council adopts it, you know, four months from now, wait, we need to address this.
Yep. Okay, perfect. Yep.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Let's pick up on page 16. These are the items that currently have just very few supplemental regulations
Have no.
or have no regulations.
Yeah.
So, this is where the topic of discussion of adding regulations to these items are starting.
Again, similar to the last few reviews, these aren't numbered yet because, once again, that'll happen when we have an actual draft ordinance ready for you guys to adopt or review for recommendation next month. So, as we go through them, let's reference them by the actual item name so that
Okay.
Madam Clerk can keep appropriate notes and I can know what we're talking about. Because they'll all have a 7.x until I actually put them into the ordinance.
All right. 7x nursing homes. We've talked last time about 12 units per acre. Any other screening, noise buffers, parking?
And that would be, in
That's going to be under the...
In addition or up above what we have in our Article 10 performance standards now, sir.
So, all of that will be addressed in the performance standards?
Unless the board would like to recommend something more specific for a specific use.
Was 12 units per acre, is that what we decided on when we talked about it last time?
I'd have to check y'all's notes to see exactly what it is, but...
I want to say that we voted to allow more. And I will say, I've had that on my mind, visiting my dad. There is parking spaces that are mostly empty, but it occurred to me if, say, there was a fire, there has to be a place for emergency vehicles. There has to be a place for emergency vehicles. So, maybe we want to back down to 12. I don't know what the number is. I'm just saying that it did occur to me that from a safety standpoint, in the event of an emergency.
Yeah. And fire department and emergency access is handled by the fire code. They look at all fire department access roads for facilities going forward
Okay.
for adequate maneuvering space, turnaround space, et cetera. So, typically, you wouldn't address that in your UDO because the fire code
Got you.
handles that stuff. And we have a really great fire plan reviewer named Joe Snap. If anybody doesn't know him, he's awesome, and he's very active in our plan review. So, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Just, I did just get my notes, Chairman Bradley, and 12 was the number
Okay.
that we agreed to.
Okay. Very good. So, on page 16, does anyone, I'll start with Jean, do you have any supplemental regulations for anything on page 16 that you would like to address?
No.
No?
No.
Carrie?
On 7x rental of goods, merchandise, equipment, no outside storage, there's no text there. So, Matt, I thought you might want to explain that.
So, I included that because it was one that, in the table of use discussion, there was some discussion about whether we should have supplemental regulations. To me, if there's no outdoor display of goods and it's rental, that's not super different from a retail, just a sale, a general retail establishment. So, I didn't have any additional ones other than our performance standards, but I did want to put it in front of you in case there was some concern or some additional supplemental regulations that the board thought might be appropriate. But if everything's inside and it's things that are for rent, that's not very different from everything being inside in a place that stuff's for sale necessarily.
Yeah. So, we don't need regulations? We just have a definition of what that is?
Yeah, we would just define it.
Okay.
And like I said, since it's pretty similar, I didn't think, I couldn't think of any additional supplemental regulations, but it was brought up by the board in the table of use review, so I wanted to include it in there.
Okay. And then, going down to 7x, Chairman, you want to just go through
Yeah.
comments on this page?
Yes.
Okay. With drive-through, I guess my questions would be, are we covered enough here in terms of how to access, whether side rear, residential, if something's near residential, the associated protections for a drive-through being near residential property? What about walk-up? Is there anything that we need to build around that? And then, parking? So, what, those are just questions I bring up that occur to me when I think of restaurants' drive-through.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I'll comment a little bit on that. In our performance standards, we have standards for how properties access. It includes driveway construction and approach, et cetera. The typical, the impact that you see from a restaurant with a drive-through service on residential service is the cars that are in the drive-through. That's why we recommended a type C buffer yard there because that's one that includes an opaque fence, in addition to vegetative buffering for that type of screen, specific to this use. And one thing I run to in jurisdictions that have many drive-throughs is that oftentimes the drive-through is designed in a way that interferes with pedestrian and handicap accessibility. So, like, they might have the stacking in a way that like, like your handicap parking's over here and there's a striped path, but that's where the... over here and there's a striped path, but that's where the, the drive-through stacking is designed to go. And so, including that seven dot X dot three, to make sure that that drive-through stacking doesn't interfere with pedestrian and handicap facilities. So when we do the plan review, if, hey, here's my stacking area, but here's where my walk-up is specifically, or here's where my drive-through is specifically, we can look at them and say, no, you need to go rethink how you've got your drive-through layout there, because it can't interfere with those, those facilities specifically. Parking, hang tight, let me pull up. We do have restaurant as a specific use in our parking table.
Okay.
It's typically for restaurants based on a seating floor area, because that's the people that are actually parking, you know, in a drive-through access, those are, you know, you actually usually have less parking because you have more people actually utilizing the drive-through instead of going in and, and sitting and eating. But certainly, if there's something we want to address here, whether it be, you know, requirements for, you know, impervious surface areas in the parking or some different parking ratio, be happy to take a look at that for you as well.
I seem to recall the only time we've had a request for this on the island for a drive-through window, a lot of discussion from council and the public around where their drive-through queue would be, right? Because I think it was right next to a residential property. And so I think about things like on a drive-through, do you, on Oak Island Drive, do we want the drive-through, you know, entering on Oak Island Drive, or a side street, or from the rear? It seems like we should be thinking about those things, is all I'm saying.
I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I'd have to review the notes from the meeting where we looked at that specific use in the table. Was there a recommendation to not allow them on the island, or was that left as a special use?
That's what I thought it was.
Yeah, so, once again, when you have your draft table in front of you, I'll, I'll re-review all the notes, but if the, if the planning board consensus when you reviewed the table of uses was that we don't want drive-throughs on the island, that this would only be allowed in the CLD anyway, but I'll, I'll take another look at that, for sure. But yeah, anything you want to address in here?
How, how would that affect the two left that we have drive-throughs?
Right.
Well, if they have, if they have a special use permit, a special use permit runs with the land. I believe we have one that has a special use permit. If it's a, if it's a legal non-conforming use, legal non-conforming uses continue as long as they compile with the legal non-conforming standards in the ordinance.
What an effective one.
So anyone, yeah, and anyone that doesn't have a special use permit right now is already a legal non-conformity, because it's a, it requires a special use permit in our ordinance now, and if they don't have one, then they're already legally non-conforming in that regard.
So could we strike the drive-through aspect of it and do restaurants only?
You'll, in the table of uses revision, you'll have a, an item, so you may recall, we'll have an item for just a restaurant and then a restaurant, or a restaurant without drive-through services and a restaurant with drive-through services. We didn't really, I don't believe, discuss any need for additional supplemental regulations for a, a restaurant without a drive-through service, which is why it's not included in here on this.
Yeah, we, I think what, what I'm looking at, if I've got, I don't know if I have the most current table of uses, but we currently, we changed them to SS in CB District and PS in CLD District.
Okay.
That's currently what we had revised.
Yeah.
And, and with a specific note to build regulations around with drive-through, so.
Sure. So yeah, what you would do there is, and we could work on drafting that, if there's additional concerns about drive-through lanes and stackings, we can include some locational standards, or even setback requirements that they, you know, the drive-through be setback in additional amount from the regular structure setback or something like that, in addition to this buffering and, and parking and our handicap and pedestrian stuff.
But, okay, so the location standards is where we would say, in other words, if, if we're going to build regulations, if we don't want drive-throughs interfering off Oak Island Drive and potentially queuing up a line of traffic onto Oak Island Drive, do we want to say entry on the side street or rear, something that
Yeah, absolutely.
That's what we need to add now.
I think, I think so. If the board agrees, I think we should look for some language around that.
I don't, because if there's none allowed on the island, they're not going to stack up on Oak Island Drive anyway.
But they are, they are allowed.
I think Ms. McCullough's saying her notes still had it as a, a special use.
A special use and a permitted with supplemental regulations. They are, that's, that is the current.
I was thinking we could put in there something about there wasn't any on the island.
I, I think that's a mistake. I mean, we just went through a pandemic, where we can't go sit down in restaurants and, you know, people that have physical disabilities and, you know, when my kids were little and they're strapped in car seats, we probably wouldn't have survived without drive-throughs. It, it, it does allow for convenience for, you know, people who only have a few minutes to get lunch, they don't have time to go in and
Well, how, how about this, since it appears there's some confusion? What I'll do is go ahead and prepare what we're talking about, and like I said, next month, you'll have the table of uses based on your discussion, ready to be adopted. So if it's been struck from the CB, maybe we don't worry about these things, but if it hasn't, if it's left in as SS, you know, I'll, I'll go ahead and get them ready for you one way or another, I guess is my point to, to that. And it sounds like we want to look about how to restrict, you know, driveway access off of East Oak Island specifically, or other major thoroughfares through the island, and, and additional setback in buffering for residential uses as well.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely.
And Matt, is, is there anything, any way that we, you know, can determine how much stacking room there needs to be? I mean, I know that's going to vary from one restaurant to another, you know, Chick-fil-A needs, you know?
Sure.
A lot more than, than something else.
Absolutely.
Is that?
Um, there, there's kind of two schools of thought on that. One is that you're right, in most instances, the, the individual business usually has a pretty good idea of how much stacking they actually need. The flip of that is sometimes they go overboard and put in a bunch of stacking, and, I mean, we see it with parking especially all the time where people, they, they way overpark their site, and you have spaces that stay empty, you know, 80% of the time, and they're just using up a bunch of space. So what I'll do for that is I'll, I'll research a couple of similar jurisdictions and see what type of regulations they have. I mean, you could even, you could go so far in your ordinances to say you can only have stacking for X number of cars for, you know, this, but the, the problem with that is
I was thinking the more, the better, because then they're not backing up in the road.
That's right. The problem with that is when you have a use that, and, that comes in and they, they know how much stacking they need, and we say, well, no, you can only have X amount, they don't design and plan for that stacking that they know they need, and that's when you get into a situation where they're backed up onto the highway. One thing we could, so I'll, I'll look at a few jurisdictions when I come back to you guys next month, and in addition, you know, there's, there's opportunities and the, I believe I've talked about it before, we can have like the RPO start looking at, at stuff for like traffic flow and things like that to assist us, you know, for recommendations. We, we send the RPO all of our technical review plans anyway, so if we have a question about like stacking, we can at least get their traffic planner to give us some additional comments on stuff like that, so, yeah.
Yeah, because I, I, you guys may have seen this, and in full transparency, I did post on Facebook that I'd like to have some input from the citizens about how they feel about drive-through restaurants, right? And I didn't get a whole lot of response, but, but the people
Run for town council, you'll get it.
But I did get some direct responses, and most of those were that people, our citizens do not want drive-throughs. But, but I think, to Ms. Morgan's point, you know, we have some situations in some small businesses here who do thrive with that, right? And so I think what we did not want was, you know, Burger King or a large chain, which I think we all talk about, but probably it's not a possibility for us anyway, based on demographics, but, but I think largely the public says they don't want them, but I think that the ones we do have provide a public service for us.
Yeah, and I, I can add that to my list and, and look at, you know, the two or three that we have here on the island, and, you know,
Amic those.
Yeah, do something similar to what they already have as well.
Or, or do we want to say it can't be bigger than X size, and then that's going to allow mom and pop to operate and not
Right, but not a big chain or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, if, yeah, I mean, if you, the, the flip of that is true too, so like if we set a, a stacking requirement, and to, to use your example, Chick-fil-A comes in and says, oh, we want to do a Chick-fil-A, and I say, we can only have X number of stacking, they're going to go, what, we can't even operate our business model on that, so they're not going to come, you know what I mean? So yeah, that's an avenue we can pursue too.
And I'd like to see there always, if there is a drive-through, that there always is a walk-up as well, because I think, I think our community needs to be more walkable than, than vehicular in my, that's what I'd like to see in terms of
Like the ice cream places on
Yeah.
Oh, no. From an insurance company standpoint, they ought to ban every walk-up thing there is because people get ran over.
Why is that?
From a general liability standpoint, I wouldn't want
Well, that's certainly the business person's call as to whether
That's right, that's right.
But if we allowed it, it
And have we, have we had someone that's gotten run over in the, since
Thank you, Matt, that'll be great.
It could happen and it would. Call to order. If you need to jump in, raise your hand, but let's not talk over top of each other. David.
One thing about drive-ups or drive-throughs, you know, I think the, everybody's saying no drive-throughs, which slows down the larger chain restaurants, but, but at the same time, you have to keep in your mind that drive-throughs are changing. You know, I, I think in 10 years, I don't think anybody will have a drive-through. It's going to be, you know, just like it is now at a large chicken chain, you put the order in and you park in space one, you park in space two.
Yeah.
And then they bring it out to you, so I don't think
Could go for that.
Eliminating drive-throughs or trying to harshen the design of it is going to slow down a chain restaurant. I think you're going to have to
Um, sorry, I didn't mean to, you have a good point there too. We see, you know, large brands go into walkable urban downtowns that don't have any even onsite parking a lot of times.
Sure, sorry.
But, so yeah, we, we could certainly, you know, as things change, and as markets change, definitely, you know, as those markets become more attractive, when a business looks and says, okay, this doesn't fit with what I've been doing, but there's a market here for me to move in and do something new and still make it work.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
So yeah, if you
They'll get creative.
If you increase parking space requirements for excess of a commercial restaurant use to more spaces per table, then now you're getting a larger site, now you don't have a site on the island large enough, then you're blowing through impervious areas, and then that, you know, helps deter also.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah.
If you, if you look at it and say, okay, I, I want to build a, a, a restaurant that's a national chain and, and all I have to work with is an end cap on Oak Island Drive, well, when that space becomes not large enough because of parking space requirements, buffer requirements, dumpster requirements, you know, now you're actually preventing something. If you just attack it through the drive-through, that technology is years old, it's going, it's, it's being modified on a daily basis.
Yeah, the apps are becoming
Yep.
The thing to do.
Yeah, what we're looking at today, we need to be looking at tomorrow.
Correct. That's right. So, so Chairman Bradley?
Go ahead.
So Matt, you're going to craft up some revised text for us, is that at the end of all this?
Yeah, it sounds like there's a couple of things that, a couple of additional things that y'all would like to look at.
Craft it up, Matt.
I'll have it in front of you, absolutely.
Get your paintbrush out.
No, absolutely.
I think there are probably other towns that we can benchmark after, right? With certain, with lanes around these?
Yeah, I mean, certainly there are. Drive-through services are, are always a hot topic, especially anywhere where you want to, to craft a, a walkable environment, and that's because it takes up a lot of space on the site. You have pedestrian, to your point, you have pedestrian vehicle conflicts happening on the site. So, yeah, we can, we can pull some more stuff, for sure, for you guys.
Thank you.
Very good.
That's all I had on this page.
Along that vein though, and not something for the next meeting, Matt, I do wonder, I mean, are there towns that sort of have this sort of feel that we want, where they want to encourage business, but yet they want it to sort of stay more local? I wonder, are there UDOs for those towns that we could get our hands on? Again, this is more of a research project, if you know of any towns, you know, is it worth looking at some of those UDOs and letting us see how others tackle some of the same issues we're tackling, but maybe differently? I'd just throw that out there.
They're all online.
Yeah, yeah, I just don't know the towns that, and I didn't know if, if Matt and his position or through your connections, if there are some communities that you think sort of embody where we're trying to, you know, what we're trying to maintain.
Yeah, absolutely.
Again, just something for a list, a to-do list when you have free time.
Knowing what our upcoming agenda scheduling is like, I'd be happy to, to schedule, you know, like some discussion around that for the board when we have, have a light agenda. I can also, you know, do research and forward it to the board in the interim as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
And Chairman Bradley, if I may, Mr. Gilbert, what, what things I've done, like when we've gone through and look at the reg, definitions and the regulations, I just go out and Google certain things, you know? And then towns will pop up and you can go to their MUNICode or their ordinances and you can kind of look at, and that's where I've gotten some of my suggestions that I made on the definitions, was doing, just doing Google research, right? So just a suggestion.
It's a amazing wealth of information out there.
Mm-hmm. It's a good thing. That's all I have on this
That's all you have?
I don't have anything to add.
David?
Good.
The only question I have is under the rental of goods, merchandise and equipment with outside storage. LSV rental would not fall under that category, is that correct?
We have a specific use in the table for golf cart LSV rental, yes, sir.
Okay, that's a seven point five?
I believe so, yes, sir. Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure it wouldn't fall under that category. So that's good for page 16. 17, full page. Now, these are just, these will go with the current plans, they have to meet all the regulations. All we're looking for is anything extra that we need to look at for these topics. Jean?
No, sir. I, I really, it's a head-scratcher on mining and quarrying operations. I don't know why, again, we would allow that, but if it's to give us one more reason to say no to a permit, I'll concede. I think on my comment, I, I do think buffers, we talked a lot about it last time, I do think we need to go back and revisit buffers because, and how we, because the comment earlier about the, the screened fence, you know, do we really want littered fences separating all, or are there vegetative screens and things like that that serve a much better purpose, much more for stormwater, for environment, for all the things that we want? So I would just say that's a general comment on this page where we had buffering a lot that I feel like we need to deal with at the same time.
So you want to add opaque along with vegetation?
I would like to add the, the opaque being the fence.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would like to use fence as rarely as possible and use more of a vegetation, vegetative screening. But again, I'll put that on the buffers topic, and let's deal with buffers sort of as, as one item. The quarry is just to me why we even have it, again.
That would be one more in the industrial that we don't have.
Correct.
Correct.
And Matt, remind us on the type C buffer and B buffer, I think that's going to answer your question.
And D, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. So in our current buffer yard standards, most things only really require a, a type A or a type B buffer. In some instances, or actually in place of a type A or type B buffer, you can use a C or a D. A C includes an opaque fence in addition to vegetation, so the, the thinking that I had in that was some of these uses, you might want that, that opacity there between a residential and a use. Certainly, if you wanted something Certainly, if you wanted something similar, but only vegetative, um, you could do a type B too, which is really out of our vegetative buffers, the tightest one that we have as far as opacity goes. Um, but that was the only thinking I had there was that some of these uses, you might really want that full opacity between the, the two sites. I agree with you that, um, a fence, sometimes it makes a good neighbor, sometimes it doesn't because you're not connecting the community through that site. A type D buffer yard, um, I specifically included with the mining and quarrying because it includes a berm as well as vegetation, which you commonly see, uh, on mining sites that have buffering requirements, uh, a, a pretty deep setback in addition to not just the fence, not just vegetative, but a, a berm as well, so that there's that earthen, um, separation from the site.
So in, in C, where you're using the opaque fence, right now, does the, and I apologize because I've not gone to the buffer and sort of committed these to memory, does that, if you put up an opaque fence, does that then have a requirement that you vegetate?
Yes.
The neighbor's side of that fence so that they're not now looking on a big?
Yes, sir.
It does not require though that you, that you do the, the vegetation on the petitioning property side? It's just the neighbor's side?
That's right, yeah. So the finished side of the fence gets vegetated, yes, sir.
Oh, Carrie.
Okay, I have a few things, sorry. Seven X taxi stands, I think based on today where we are, I, I wonder if that should be expanded to shuttles, buses, and ride-share type applications? Because that's where we are today in 2024.
Yeah.
Um, I think, you know, as, as off-island growth happens, there'll be shuttles coming on the island for the beach. So it seems to me that instead of, I don't know what it, we call it, Matt, but it seems like taxi stands is too limiting to what we might end up with, I think.
Yeah, we can, um, expand that definition for sure to, uh, and even the title of it for sure to include some of those uses.
Transportation.
And we call it like a staging area or something like that, um, because that's kind of, what we're thinking about here is like a place where maybe the, the vehicles are parked and people are going up. Now, a ride-share that's coming to pick you up at your house and take you somewhere, that, that's not really what we would be about in that instance. And we do want to make sure that we, in that instance, we probably want to delineate between public and private because if we have a, a public shuttle or bus stop or something like that, we don't want to, we want to encourage that, um, for sure within our, our regulations. Um, so just some stuff to think about there. But I, I think to your point, we, we probably look at it maybe expanding the title and the definition of those things going forward.
And then also, I see on the table of uses, we didn't allow it in the airport district, but it seems like.
It seemed like it might be a good spot for it.
Yeah, I think it probably would.
That's a good point, absolutely.
To Mr. Gilbert's point, that probably is a table of uses revision we should make to allow those kinds of pickup areas on, in the airport district, I think.
Yeah.
Um, wholesale sales, um, do we have a definition for that? I had a note that we didn't have a definition. Did we, Matt, did we have a definition?
I'm looking right now.
Different note.
One, we can definitely craft one.
So yeah, we probably should put a definition around that.
Absolutely.
And then, um, under seven X agriculturally related businesses, um, this is just a discussion point. Um, it seemed to focus mainly on, um, the bona fide farm approach within 160D. But I mean, I'm thinking about things like community gardens. Um, I, I think we would want that, right?
Is that a business?
And is that covered within?
Would that be deemed a business, a community farm?
Yeah, um, bear with me just a second here.
Maybe we want it to be because there's still some requirements we may, may, may want to have them.
And I think.
Yeah, if it's, so if it's town-related, um, we would probably put that under something like a, a outdoor recreation facility. If it's like a town owned and operated, like if it's at a town park and there's a community garden there, that would fall under that, uh, outdoor recreation category. For individuals, for, I mean, you're right, is, is it an individual versus a business? I mean, we already have like commercial greenhouses and nurseries, um, and garden centers and stuff like that. So, um, the purpose of including this as needing to be on a bona fide farm is to make sure that somebody doesn't not have a bona fide farm and try to use this as a way to say, well, I'm not a garden center, I'm an agriculturally related business. And so we want to say, well, are you? Because in order to be that, you have to be on the property of an actual farm to be that, to, to kind of figure that, uh, to out.
So we did have that in CLD as SS use, right? For bona fide farms, and that seems appropriate? CLD?
Uh, I would say so just because, um, we don't really have a lot of land here on the island. Most of the off-jurisdiction stuff is, um, either CLD, um, or in a PUD. I don't think that's already gonna have something like that. So, um, we look at the places where somebody might have a large tract of land that's going to be a bona fide farm. It's usually farther out of town and the CLD zone.
Storage outside completely enclosed structure, I didn't see a definition for that either, or even if we needed one.
That's pretty much a definition in and of itself, the title, so.
But it's not listed in the definition, so did we need to put it over there?
I could look and see if we have one or if there's one out there that's, uh, that makes sense for us for sure, absolutely.
Thank you. Uh, we talked about mining and quarry.
Yeah.
Um, recycling processing centers, it seems like when we went through the table of uses, we kind of talked about donation boxes. And are we covered okay here with these supplemental regulations around donation boxes that you may see?
Yeah, so, uh, our table actually has two things for recycling. It has recycling centers and recycling processing centers. Um, so it's, one, it, the table of uses typically deals with, with permanent, uh, things. So if somebody has a recycling drop box in their, or a donation drop box in their parking lot, that's, that's not a, usually not permanently affixed to the ground. That's something that, um, sits like that. Um, we could probably look at that in terms of, um, accessory uses and structure regulation. Have something in there that, um, you know, donation and recycling drop boxes don't interfere with parking. You know, some of the stuff we've already talked about, parking, uh, vehicle, uh, pedestrian accessibility. So somebody doesn't, maybe you've got the minimum required parking on your site and somebody goes, well, I'd really like to put a donation drop box out here, and they stick it in that last parking spot. And now you've, you know, reduced the parking for your site. But yeah, we could, uh, for the, those things that aren't permanently affixed to the ground, we, we would probably stick a regulation like that in the accessory, uh, uses and structures regulations.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So should we, so we, the takeaway is we would try to put something there related to the?
The drop boxes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, yeah, because I, I would think that somebody could just block one down wherever, if we don't have any rules around it.
Yeah.
Um, let's see, public recreation facility, um, outdoor. It says it's allowed in all districts, and I just want to make the comment, does, does that seem right? That we would want public recreation facilities just anywhere on the island, all districts? Just a thought.
I mean, why not? The city could put one anywhere. Are we going to restrict the city where we can have public recreation facility outdoor?
Yeah, I'm just thinking about, you know, height, noise, um, hours of operation, things that may affect residential neighborhoods and communities. I mean, I'm not saying it's a bad thing, right? Not saying any kind of recreation is a bad thing, but having very specific rules around what won't disrupt a neighborhood is the only thing I'm trying to get at. Is that what we want? And maybe it is.
Uh, and I'm certainly not the, the Parks and Recreation Director, but, uh, I would think that any new park that was going in a residential area especially would be subject to quite a bit of discussion on the front end to, to make, because these are the, to your point, these are town-owned and operated.
Right.
Um, so, uh, I couldn't imagine the scenario, and I guess there could be one, but where the, the town would intentionally put in a park in a residential zoning district that would, you know, have some, negatively impact.
Well, I mean, they could put a dog park in and I might not like it, somebody else might.
Yeah.
So it's like, are you going to limit the hours? You know, I might not like the concert going on down.
Right.
You know, so there's.
Well, the, for instance, the town of Cary, as there was more and more developed, that created flooding issues in areas that were already developed. And so the town actually started buying all of the properties that were being flooded and turning them into a park. So you can be driving down a residential street and there's one low-lying lot that the town has bought and made into a park, but it was just a, it was just a little nature park and.
Like Veterans Park or something like that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, parks typically?
Yeah, it, it, they're all over the place in Cary.
Yeah.
So that's, that's my point. I don't, I don't know, should we have anything additional here? Um, do we feel like, I, I mean, I feel like certainly the town's going to be protective of the citizens and do the right thing. But, but to Jean's point, you know, if a dog park pops up next door to my house, I might not like that too much. Unless, Matt, for other zoning reasons, that's not possible.
Um, I mean, it, it would certainly fall under this category if the town bought a piece of property and wanted to put a dog park in as, as a part of that.
I think the citizens would support it, actually.
Or a boat ramp. I mean, boat ramps, parks, I mean.
It's all the same.
Yeah.
And the public's is the town, and I don't feel the town's going to do something that's going to be detrimental to the neighborhood.
Okay, fair enough.
So.
Okay, that's all I have on this page, sir.
Melanie?
I just had one question really from Matt. Um, for instance, uh, like a, a temporary farm stand kind of?
Right.
Seasonal sale? Where, where's that going to fall under?
Um, so we do have a, a farm stand category in the table of uses, I believe, unless we, uh, unless the discussion, uh, around it was to strike it, um, and once again, I'd have to go back and double-check those notes. Um, should you, uh, take something like that out? So most of the farm stand temporary stuff we see falls under our, uh, vendor category of uses. Uh, and they come in and get, um, what's called a itinerant merchant permit from the town. There's, uh, time limitations, there's placement limitations, uh, associated with that permit already. Uh, usually when you see somebody out on East Oak Island, you know, selling fruit or selling stuff like that, um, where they've set up for the day, um, they come in and get an itinerant merchant permit for that.
I just wanted to make sure that was a little possibility.
Absolutely.
Oh, yes.
My favorite job ever was Jean's berry patch and.
David?
I think we do have on the farm craft produce markets, we did leave that on the table of uses. Would that fall under that, Matt? Is that what you're referring?
It could if it was permanent, so, but if it's like a temporary, somebody pulls up and, on a vacant piece of property and like sets up a tent to sell their, you know, their produce for the season, um, they could come in and get an itinerant merchant permit for something like that.
That covers, okay.
All right.
And that, that happens every year. We, we usually sell out of them actually, of the number we're allowed to sell. It's very good.
I think they've pretty much covered everything.
You good? Covered all my notes. Very good, I think we hit my notes on that also. Eighteen. You good, Jean?
I'm good. I don't have anything.
Good. Carrie.
Sorry. Uh, commercial recreation facility outdoor, again, um, I see we've got height and, uh, lighting restrictions, buffering, um, noise. Any limitation that the board feels we need on hours of operation on those? And the same for commercial indoor, as a matter of fact.
As long as they're quiet.
Matt, what do you think the benchmark on that is? Outdoor recreation, are there typically hours of operation limitations on that?
Um, so we, you know, we do have a, a few uses in the, in the UDO that have, uh, some hours of operations associated with them. Largely, that's been left up to, uh, the, the town's noise ordinances to kind of govern. But I don't really have any, uh, recommendation one way or another for an hour of operation for something like that. For the, the size and the, the height limitations that we had for the outdoor stuff in the CB, uh, we benchmarked that on one of the outdoor recreations we have in the town currently. Um, so we can make sure, so that's, we talked about that a couple of times, trying to match what might happen going forward with the things that we have that, that we like, so. But certainly if the, the board wants to discuss and recommend hours of operation, that can, that can be, it can be included.
Are these private or public?
These are private, commercial operations.
Yes, sir.
Do we want to entertain hours of operation?
Or at least some type of more, because I know if it's following this, and, and I don't have the noise ordinance, if it's following the noise, I think certain days it might even, the noise ordinance might be extended until 11 o'clock at night, for example. So I, you know, do we want that, if, especially with it butting up beside residential?
Well.
I don't, but I can tell you.
I don't either.
You don't what? You don't want it to be limited?
We shouldn't restrict a business hours of operation.
No, no, not the hours of operation, but just the noise.
I, I think that needs to be addressed with the noise ordinance.
You don't want to get into noise.
We do, we do want to get into noise.
You need to take care of the noise ordinance.
Exactly. The noise ordinance, and that does need to be addressed.
We need to revisit the noise ordinance and let it drive this.
Okay, hold on, we're talking over top of each other.
If I may chime in briefly, uh, a year ago, um, you're right, at one point, the noise ordinance had different, uh, times based on the day of the week. Uh, the town council, uh, I think it was about a year ago, maybe a little bit more, um, voted to consolidate that to just one standard for the week.
What is that standard, do you recall?
Uh, the noise ordinance changes, uh, the levels that you're allowed changes between, uh, 7:00 PM or 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM. And that's, that's all week.
So 11:00 PM, all week?
Yeah. There's no difference on the weekend anymore. I'll also, uh, chime in with a procedural thing. Uh, this board can't recommend, uh, as part of your duties and powers, you're not authorized to recommend a change to the noise ordinance because it's not a part of the UDO. Um, town council can do it all day and they don't even need your recommendation to do it. Um, but we, you guys couldn't initiate, uh, uh, amendment to the noise ordinance because it's not one of your duties unless town council assigns it to you specifically.
Okay.
So we're good?
I think the buffers and so forth, that goes into building more.
Goes into play with that and the setbacks.
Okay. Floating homes. I didn't see a definition, Matt, and it seems like that's something we should define pretty specifically.
Yeah, um.
It's a dwelling, but it floats, so that.
Is that a boat?
Sometimes after a storm, that covers a lot.
Yeah, that's right.
Don't see a whole lot of these, and I, I think this was probably when it was put in, if I had my guess without looking at some minutes for whenever this was adopted, um, you know, sometime, these types of uses get hot and they don't. Um, there's a, there's a development on the waterfront in downtown Wilmington where they actually have?
Yep.
Homes, permanent homes, like they're floating on the water, but you're, it's not a boat that you're taking out or anything like that. So I could definitely look at, uh, how Wilmington defines it since that's a, a development that we know is happening, uh, and incorporate that here. The, while we're talking about it, the, the two standards that we have here, I, I do want to explain a little bit because you guys might not be, um, super familiar with these. Um, the, the KAMA and the flood hazard regulations are, are pretty standard and we want anything that's in those areas to follow those. Um, they would apply anyway, but, um, you know, when we, i- if you remember from when we talked about, uh, you know, piers and marinas and stuff like that, that note's in there. Um, I'm usually not for doubling up on notes, but, uh, that seems pretty consistent with the town, uh, for these uses that are out by the water. Um, the, the riparian setback, just for expla- explanation, uh, if you have waterfront property, you have ripar, what's called riparian access rights onto that water. It's, it's water rights. Um, and there's setback areas for if you're going to put, put in a, a dock or a pier or something like that. Typically, uh, you can, uh, ask your neighbor to encroach into their riparian rights area for, for stuff like docks and piers and things like that. What, what I wanted to avoid here was maybe you granted your neighbor, uh, a five-foot encroachment into your riparian area and then six months later, here comes a floating home that's permanently, you know, that's not really a part of that dock, but it's maybe permanently sitting by that dock and now they further encroached into your, uh, riparian area and maybe even on to your. encroached into your riparian area, and maybe even on to your, not just into the setback, but on to your riparian rights. So that, that was the thinking there. And especially in the town, the town has street ends where we have riparian access rights, and we certainly don't want anybody building a dock or a pier right on that setback, and then coming in later and adding a floating home that's, you know, maybe moored all the time, but maybe not a part of that dock without having to stay out of that access area and that setback as well. So, just some background on that one, since that's not something that this board usually deals with a whole lot.
So question, so we do allow floating homes, we just don't currently have any?
I'm, I'm not sure we have any true legal authority over what's on federal waters.
That's a good point, too.
Yeah.
Unless it is like, you know, a dock or a pier or something, well, that is constructed in a fixed, a fixed item.
For example, that there's works now to sort of, you know, redo that marina as a non-full-service marina. In that case, could someone, instead of docking a boat, actually dock their a, a floating home? That is allowed in our ordinance, excuse me, that is allowed in our ordinance today, that they could do that?
I would think so, but, you know, unless it's a fixed structure, I don't think the town could have any.
Okay.
And that gets into how we define it to Ms. McCullough's point. We'll need to look at, and to your point, we'll probably be looking at this as something that's maybe permanently affixed to an area, but is maybe floating independent of that. You know, you see that sometimes where they're just two things floating beside each other, but they're structurally attached to one another. That'll get back into the definition of it, for sure.
And then to, and then to try to reduce that, you can look into it as like a R V mobile park. You're only allowed to leave it there for X amount of days before, you know, the next situation comes in. Like, I think most R V parks, you're allowed to park there for two weeks or something, then it has to be moved, otherwise it's considered full-time, and you could start building supplemental regulations around a timeframe.
And also, and you know, think about, there's standards around building, right? And it seems like from a public safety perspective, you don't want somebody just taking a, something crazy and floating it out there and calling it their home without any kind of public safety.
Then in a storm surge, it becomes a bulldozer going into someone else's home.
Exactly.
For sure.
I don't believe there's any, any inspections on floating homes.
Really?
I don't believe so.
I don't think so either.
Yeah, like, you know, like a, like for an electrician to wire a airport, he doesn't have to have electrical license. That's federally owned property. They can, you know, that work goes to whoever they decide it goes to, it doesn't have to be licensed contractors.
Well, I have a question that, what, what happens to the wastewater in a floating home?
They put it in a black tank, they pull up to a dock, and they pump it into the back of a, of a.
As long as it doesn't go in the water.
I think we would want to focus here on floating homes that were permanently affixed.
I think so.
That would become a part of our community on a long-term basis, and that's what we would want to address, if everybody's in agreement on that.
Yes.
Not somebody who just pulls up for, you know, a week or so for vacation. I'm not thinking about a boat, I'm thinking about something that looks more like a residential dwelling type structure.
Similar to what they're building in Wilmington.
To Matt's reference in Wilmington. Yeah. Well, I think that's what we should build guidelines around. That's my thought, anyway.
Absolutely.
That is perfect.
So it's floating, but it's permanently affixed?
Yes.
And those are only permitted in the C R zoning district, just for everyone's reference, as of right now.
And I think we changed that. It, it was a P, actually, permitted, and we revised it to supplemental regs, interestingly enough.
That's why you got them in front of you.
Okay, moving on. All right. Exterminating and pest control services, I didn't see a definition on that either, Matt. I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory, but it should just be listed in the definitions as to, I don't know, something, maybe.
Yeah, I can, and, and for things that are pretty clear in here, I can usually pull, like, instead of a specific definition, we can use Webster's, you know, so if we want that in the ordinance, I'll pop that right in there.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then on hotels, seven X hotels and motels, I noticed that that 14-person language is still in here somewhere. I saw it.
It's in the definitions, I think.
That came up at council.
Yeah.
The other night, about that. So I, I don't know what the answer is, Matt, but I think you guys explained pretty, in pretty much detail, why it's unenforceable currently. But, but just so you know, I, I saw that in there somewhere. I just made myself a note.
It's in the definition?
Yeah, it's in the definitions.
We'll get that struck out, then.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Because y'all recommended taking the note out of the table as well.
Yep. And then laundromat, I didn't see a definition on that. Again, it's kind of self-explanatory, but maybe something out of the dictionary, just to be clear.
Yep.
That's all I have. Chairman Bradley?
The only thing I had on hotels, motels, Matt, you and I discussed this earlier as far as traffic and trying to alleviate additional traffic, but yet encourage pedestrian and bicycle.
Yeah. I'll kind of explain my thoughts on, you know, traffic studies and, and traffic impact, what, in the industry, in the traffic engineer industry, they call them traffic impact analysis. In most places that use traffic impact analysis to evaluate development proposals, those are done by traffic engineers, and traffic engineers largely, almost exclusively look at automobile traffic, right? It's what they've done for many, many years. The, what happens there is you evaluate your intersections and your roadways, you look at the existing traffic and the projected traffic for the uses for what might just happen under background growth, and then recommend improvements to keep traffic flowing. Almost exclusively, those improvements that are recommended are things like long additional turn lanes, more vehicle access requirements, which certainly can, to some degree, increase vehicle movement through those intersections. The flip of that is, roadways are a geometry problem. We have X amount of right-of-way. In many instances, you can't get any more right-of-way because of the development around it. When you add additional vehicle facilities, you take away potential for additional pedestrian facilities, additional bicycle facilities, additional, you know, stormwater facilities. If you have plans for beautification or landscaping along that, you're eating away at that potential because you might have 60 feet, and you come in with a T I A, and it says, well, you need two additional turn lanes. They're gonna be 20 feet wide, they're gonna be 200 feet long for stacking. So you, by trying to solve traffic, vehicle traffic, you inadvertently impact those other modes of transportation. There's a book I have downstairs for anybody who's interested, it's called Walkable City Rules. It's by a planner who's kind of devoted their life to looking at this. And one of the rules is you should always challenge a transportation impact analysis in areas you want to be walkable, because they focus so heavily on vehicle traffic at the expense of pedestrian traffic. Not only do you lose those opportunities, anybody who, let's say you put in two right-turn lanes and a left-turn lane for something that's going on, now you've added, for somebody who's trying to cross that street, you've added 60 feet that they have to walk across with potential pedestrian vehicle impacts. It's a challenge that a lot of jurisdictions deal with, because a lot of jurisdictions are moving to areas where they want to have walkable areas, and have traditionally used these traffic impact analysis to help, you know, move vehicles along, because we've been in this automotive-centered development pattern for, you know, the better part of 60, 70 years now. And so, it's definitely something we can explore. I've kind of, you know, in areas that we do have, want to have walkability, we have to be very careful about how they're structured. If we do want to explore implementing traffic impact analysis, you know, there are opportunities for them to also consider not just the vehicle traffic, but pedestrian and cycle traffic as well, both existing and, and projected as well. What I would need as a staff to, to get, to really get the ball rolling on that is probably some assistance from our friends at the RPO, who are transportation planners, who have looked at some of these issues, because what I don't want to do is take a suburban town's T I A ordinance and, you know, adopted wholesale for the town, because that's probably gonna be automobile-oriented, and it's gonna have those negative impacts. And we need to guide, if we have a, a use or any use that we want to have traffic impact analysis on, we need to set the guidelines for what the, the traffic engineer, who's gonna be a, a third-party person, we need to set those guidelines for what they're gonna look at and how they're gonna look at it, in a way that not only accomplishes our goals of the town, but is set up so they know, is set up in their language, so they can go, okay, I, I know what this is actually asking of me. It's a little bit of a lift, but I'd be happy to reach out to the RPO, Sam Boswell, he's always very helpful, to, to get his thoughts and, and kind of see what he thinks about assisting us and, and potentially crafting something like that going forward. But I've, I've dealt with them a lot, and I've dealt with them specifically in a jurisdiction that rezoned an entire area of town that had been developed in that old style. You know, we want a huge parking lot, we want lots of vehicle access, and we're trying to rezonate it into a development pattern that was purely walkable urban downtown development. And we ran into this time and time again, where someone would come in with a use, and our ordinance would say, okay, you need a T I A for this use. And then the T I A would come back, and we, and it would be contrary to all of our actual goals with that development pattern, because it'd say, oh, instead of two lanes, you need four lanes, and you need all this extra vehicular stuff. And we're trying to say, no, we need more wider sidewalks, we need more bike lanes, stuff like that.
So, real fast, Matt, what, your personal opinion, the direction we want to go is pedestrian, box?
I think that's supported in our comprehensive land use plan as well, especially for the island, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then, all of that will be covered with a comprehensive plan for the decision of any future development?
Well, it, like I said, the, the current comprehensive land use plan already talks quite a bit about trying to create a walkable environment for the town. So my point is, if, if this board wants to, to dig into potentially having local T I A requirements for projects going forward, we want to, well, we would want to pull in the RPO anyway for their expertise on this, but we definitely want to pull them in to help us craft it so that projects that might require a T I A on the island, look at pedestrian and other, we call it multimodal avenues of traffic, and not just vehicle traffic on that road.
Would that be reasonable to have some kind of recommendation next month?
For a T I A study?
Yeah. What it would take to, how we could craft the language in this as a supplemental regulation to focus on pedestrian and effects that the future development would have?
I, I don't think I'd be able to get that for you next month, no, sir, just because these, these ordinances are really technical, because they are looked at by traffic engineers. And, like I said, a lot of, if we're trying to, if we want to do this in this way, a lot of jurisdictions aren't set up for it. So there's not a lot of places I can go look and say, oh, we'll just pull this one in and use it. So we'd really be taking what's out there right now and trying to add to it in a way that makes sense. So it's certainly something that I, like I said, I'd be happy to reach out to the RPO and kind of get started in listing their help in it. But I think it's definitely a broader discussion than just like a supplemental regulation for a hotel or a specific use. It might be something that we want to apply to most places that have them, set them up in a way that any use over a certain trip generation, any use over that threshold requires a traffic study, just period. And that's usually how I would still recommend we set it up, because then you get into kind of like, what's the, what's the additional traffic burden of a hotel versus a restaurant with a drive-through? We're not requiring a T I A for a restaurant with a drive-through, and they might have way more vehicle traffic than a hotel might, so, yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Bradley, I just, what, what's the concern about it? Because I, for me, you know, as I go down Beach Drive during the summer, and there's so many tourists here, and all those big rental houses have so many cars, and they're backing out onto in front of you. There's, I mean, I don't see any traffic impact difference, really, with a hotel, because there's actually more parking, more space for cars, better visibility to get out of that parking lot than all those houses with 12 cars packed up under them. So what, I just want to try to understand where you're coming from with it.
I just know the roads are at a certain width now. We cannot expand them for any additional traffic. And typically, when you bring in more rooms, more vehicles, more traffic, more issues?
Well, personally, I'm more concerned about the additional traffic that development along the 211 corridor is going to bring to us than anything that's happening within our town. And to your point, the houses being built, I would say it's around the upper 60s. I believe somebody on Facebook named it Sherbert Village or something. Those driveways that people are gonna be backing in and out of Oak Island Drive.
Yep, that's right.
Well, let's carry on, get this.
One last, one last note. Our commercial areas in town largely front N C D O T streets. N C D O T does have a threshold for when they require a, a traffic impact analysis. It's higher than what most local jurisdictions use when local jurisdictions adopt them. But local jurisdictions also rely on D T, D O T for their expertise in reviewing a traffic impact analysis, because they have traffic planners and engineers on staff that we don't have here. One thing, it may have changed since I've come here, but one thing I've run into is a, a local jurisdiction that has a much lower threshold than D O T, and we send it to them for their comment, and they say, we're, we're not even gonna look at this. And then the local jurisdiction is kind of stuck with like, well, we don't have a, a traffic engineer or a traffic planner to help us evaluate this T I A to begin with. So just one final note on that one, then I'll stop laboring it.
Okay. Anything else? Everybody good?
Covered again.
All right. It looks like the rest of, we are getting to what we have already discussed. We took freestanding, we redid the accessory structure.
Can I have a quick break?
Yes. Yes. I have a request for a quick break, and let's be back in five.
Is there, is there a place where we can get?
And we are back in session. We are down to the definition sections. We've reviewed this before. Carrie has a suggestion that we try to consolidate the automotive section, just like the sun section? Yes.
Yeah, if you want me to just comment. Yeah, all I'm saying, Matt, is like, so many things in here are related to automotive, you know, batteries, all this other kind of service stations, gas sta, if we just did, like, in the signage definitions, you know, automotive, and then laid out all the automotive uses within one section, I think that would be easier for people to, how do you, what's your opinion?
Yes, ma'am. So in the, so as you know, we've been, I've been building this definition section kind of as we go, and so each month, you've had some new definitions in that section. In this one, I did try to tackle some of those automotive uses, so there is kind of a long section of automobile stuff.
Yep.
In there, and tried to define them in a way that kind of laid out. of laid out how they were different. So like parking lots versus parts sales versus repair versus sales and service versus like a stereo type of shop. They all do have a little bit of a different impact, you know what I mean? But to your point, they are all automotive-related. What we would do there, if we wanted to do something like that, would be to have automobile-related uses as kind of a heading. And then I would still recommend keeping these definitions because they, like I said, they are all a little bit different. A place that sells and services your car is different from a place that only services your car, you know what I mean? So, but we could certainly look at an organizational structure like that with just automobile-related uses and then have these as like sub-definitions underneath that, for sure.
And keep the same regulations?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, don't change anything.
Just reorganize it.
Yeah.
That's a great idea.
I mean, for example, you've got filling station and then you've got gas sales operations. Can't those things be the same theoretically?
So...
Or no?
Yes and no. A filling station and hang on, and then you got small engine repair too, that's another thing.
Yep, that's right.
Hang on, I might have put something in for gas. Yeah, so the way our ordinance is written out is like convenience stores that can have gas pumps are limited by the square footage of the store. So the way I wrote in a definition for a gas sales operation was something that's bigger than that. So that would kick it into another definition and thus we could have some regulations for something like that. And another way you could potentially define it, I don't know if you've ever seen these, a lot of times in industrial places, you might have a gas filling station that has huge gas containers for like, for trucking operations to come in and fill in. That might be another potential definition for gas sales operations that we could use to delineate the two. I went with a little bit of a simpler one for this one, just to say, okay, if you're not a convenience store, you are this gas sales operation because you've exceeded the square footage of what we classify as a convenience store. But, yeah, I think we can, I think I can definitely, like you said, with the sign stuff, put that all, have automobile-related uses and kind of put that all under. It doesn't mean they're not going to be in the table of uses and not have regulations and stuff like that, but it'll just all be in one place in the definitions. Is that kind of what you're getting at?
Exactly.
Okay, yeah, for sure.
Yep, thank you, Matt.
I have a question about that. If we're here to make it simpler, does that make it simpler? Because to me, if I look up a definition for a gas station, I'm going to go to the G's. I'm not going to go to the automotive service. So why would you not set it up like that, like it is now, versus, oh, I'm going to consolidate all of this, so then somebody's got to go find the definite, you know? I mean, to me, that's the way, you know?
You could have a cross-reference. You could have it in more delay and say, see automotive. Or there are ways that you can direct them to one section.
But that makes it bigger.
But I'm not saying gas station is necessarily the right one to pull out of automotive. I'm just saying there's a way to...
Because, I mean, if I'm looking up a word, and people don't do it anymore, and you go to a dictionary, you know, if I'm going to look up gas stations, I'm not going to know, oh, I got to go over here to find something I'm looking for over here. I mean, I don't know what's simpler. To me, that's simpler.
The pleasure of the board on that. I can do it either way.
Because, you know, if, the way I look at it, if I threw this into an Excel spreadsheet and I wanted to search by it, it's going to search by the first letter. I mean, that's, that's kind of how I do it. So if it started with V, it'd be in the Ts. But that, you know, that's the way my mind works for definitions.
I'd be looking at her field.
Well, it's no different. Like if you look for, if you look for sign monument, how do you look for that today?
Right.
Because that's all under one section.
I'd go to the signs.
All right. Well, I'd like, Matt, just to give a recommendation on how to organize it in the way he thinks is simple and that's fine.
I mean, I definitely, like I said, is, either way is, I don't really have a great recommendation on that. I can, I can do it either way and it's the pleasure of the board at this point.
Let's do automotive-related business.
I can even just stick all the, all the automotives under one and leave like the gas station and stuff, leave some separate ones out.
Yeah.
Under their first letter or something like that, but it can be consolidated. I'll work on it.
Automotive going to have accessory structure? Because I can have an automotive that's got a necessary structure. I mean, I don't know how you're going to classify all the auto is auto.
Well, that kind of gets into commercial development, which, when you do a commercial development, you are allowed to have accessory structures related to that commercial development on the property. That's just, kind of gets back to the difference between how our ordinance regulates residential uses and residential accessory structures versus commercial ones.
I understand that. I'm just talking about, when you start looking at automotive and you start going through here to figure out which ones are going to be automotive, you know, you might think it's automotive, I think it's something else. So how are we going to decide? That's why I said just leave it with definitions.
I think some of the drawbacks, though, was when we went through the table of uses, we changed some naming conventions on the uses. And so what I was trying to get at was just making sure that the table of uses, the definitions and the regs are all in one location. So I defer to Matt to help us with that.
Absolutely.
So, the assignment for next week, as we did before, look at the definitions, send your suggestions to Matt and Lisa. We will look at the finished proposal next month and discuss any variations and plan to have a vote on that next month.
Yeah, so next month, you'll have something that's, staff has ready for you for recommendations. Anytime we have a recommendation, you guys know this, if there's something that y'all want to discuss or something that you want to recommend a little bit different, or I didn't get the wording right or something like that, you know, it's still your recommendation. So you'll still have that opportunity. Just because I brought you something for recommendation doesn't mean you have to do it as is.
When you say next meeting next month, we got a meeting next week.
Are you April or next Friday?
The regular meeting in April.
Regular meeting in April.
Not March.
Not March.
No, not March.
Okay.
I was going to ask the same question.
Yeah, because when you said next meeting, I was like, man, that's going to be live. Okay, all right, thank you.
So to repeat, we have until, so to send them electronically. So Matt and Lisa just did not, just omit what I've already sent you because I sent you mine this morning.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll go through and...
If you guys could get me, let's see, when is our, our, April meeting is the 18th? Today is the 14th. If you could get me your stuff by the 25th of March, that's a little bit over a week, that'd give me plenty of time to get it incorporated.
Okay.
I'm ready for your agenda.
Mr. Chair, I do have two questions. Just, I want to make sure the board is aligned on these things, right? Because the last time we talked about definitions in January, I had two suggestions for things I thought should be added to the definitions and maybe subsequently to the table of uses. And that was accessory dwelling unit. I didn't see it in these definitions, Matt, but I noticed you put accessory to a business or something like that. Maybe that's where you wanted to put that.
No, we had discussed, I put that in because we had discussed the, the current table of uses has residential above a business. But we had discussed that there's not much difference if it's beside or behind, as long as it's attached to that business. So if you've got a, an office, and we have some out here where we have offices and things like that with the residents above, but what if it's, you know, just behind it? So that was just to switch that over to a residence that's attached to a business versus a, I can definitely, yeah, there's ADU, accessory dwelling unit definitions out there that we can pull in, for sure.
I just think as we move forward and to Mr. Pershur's point, as we think about in the future, right, I think ADUs are going to become a thing for, you know, for our community and for our citizens to be able to have an option for elder care or someone in their home, right? So not to say, not try to build any rules around it today, but I think it's something we should define as something we acknowledge we will need. And the other thing was that I had asked that we add to the, to the definitions residential rental property.
Yes, ma'am.
I realize we don't have a use for that per se, but again, I think it's something that has huge impact to our community and I think we all agreed that we would add it to the definitions so that it's at least an acknowledged use, even, even, even though I think we don't have it on the table of uses.
Yeah, and you couldn't classify any single-family dwelling as something different in our definition sections, for sure. So if your intention is to say, if it's a single-family home and it's a rental, it's this other thing, that's getting back to that note in our ordinance that we can't enforce. For things like dwelling, dwellings, single-family 1 and 2, the state requires us to, we can't adopt a definition that's inconsistent with the North Carolina State Building Code for 1 and 2 family dwellings. The North Carolina State Building Code definition for 1 or 2 family dwellings includes places for sale, occupation, or, and it specifically says for rent. So if we try to say a single-family home that is by nature of being for rent, is not that. We have adopted a definition that's different, that's inconsistent with the state definition, the state building code definition of it. If your intention is to look at things that may be your rented-by-room or, you know, a single-family home that has, you know, units in it or something like that, we could, I can definitely look into something like our bed and breakfast definition and make sure that covers those types of things as well. But I don't, if it's just the whole house, whether it's for rent or not, because of the way that North Carolina Building Code definition is laid out, I don't see how, if we have a different definition in our ordinance for that, that's based on it being for rent. I think we've adopted a definition that's inconsistent with that, that state building code definition.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to have anybody misunderstand. I'm not, I'm not against residential rental property.
I know, absolutely.
I just think that if there are things we need to do from a community perspective around building regulations around that, guidelines that are protective of the community, if we don't acknowledge that they are different than a regular single-family dwelling, then we don't, we are not recognizing that they are different. And they are.
And I think...
And they have a different impact to our community.
I think the only way we can do that, once again, is if we base it on, base it on defining something that's not for rent as a whole, but is for rent in pieces because we will have, whether we regulate them one way or not, we will have violated that state statute by adopting a definition that's inconsistent with the North Carolina Building Code definition. But I certainly understand your point, that's for sure.
In other words, you didn't put it in the definitions because you feel like we, it would not be, it would be noncompliant?
If it's, if it's a whole-house rental and that's how we're defining it, yes.
Okay, okay. I appreciate the explanation.
Absolutely.
Are we good? Can I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn. Oh, let me just make sure I understand. So we're going to go through our definitions and provide those back to Matt, any other revisions that we see. And then we will see those when, at the April meeting? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Before, what was, what is the topic for next Friday again?
Next week, your agenda hasn't been published yet, but I'm hoping to, I've had counsel in this meeting and a couple of other meetings this week, so I'm hoping, going to work on it this afternoon and hopefully have it out to you tomorrow by the end of the day.
But we don't know the topic yet.
It's your regular meeting. It's your regular monthly meeting.
Okay.
It's next week, yes, sir.
We had had a conversation earlier, I thought.
It'll be further discussion of what is on the agenda because we've been doing the UDO for so long.
If you recall, last month, we discussed off-premise signage.
Oh, yes.
You guys had some recommendations that you wanted to see for that, so I'll have that available for you as well. We've also gotten an application in for a text amendment. Since the agenda hasn't been published, I won't go into too much detail on that, but you'll have a staff memo detailing what the request is, as well as some analysis based on our comprehensive land use plan for that as well, for you to digest. And like I said, I'm hopeful I can have that at least, at the very least, in electronic form to you guys by the end of the day tomorrow.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, one last thing. There was the School of Government Planning and Zoning Training that I had recommended to council. I did receive affirmative feedback from several of them, I think in the majority, actually. So I just wanted to make sure that we as a board were, in fact, interested in that training offered by the School of Government. And if the town is willing to bring forth some funds associated with that, I'm happy to enroll us and get that established. Madam Clerk, do I, do you want to have any involvement in that or?
Well, I mean, we haven't been involved in it to this point, so, you know, I'd have to check with the finance director and see if that's something that's budgeted or if she needs to take something to council formally, which we hadn't been requested to do yet. And then staff would need to do those registrations because, I mean, an advisory board member can't obligate the town to spend money, so.
Okay, fair enough. So I can put us...
For us to individually pay if we wanted to participate in something like that?
You can. We could pay individually.
Do you like a motion?
If you want to. But I'll, I'll send a summary out to everybody.
Okay.
Please.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, we're adjourned.